I will. Everybody's coming in.
Everyone in?
Everyone is in.
Okay, I'm just double checking. Alright, we will start our meeting. This meeting of the Livingston City Commission is called to order. May we have roll call, please?
Chair Holman?
Yes.
Commissioner Schwartz?
Present.
Commissioner Freedman's currently absent. Commissioner Maybe? And Commissioner News.
Do you know what your voice?
Hold on one second, I just dropped something. There went all my papers. I'm. Sorry about that. Next on our agenda, which is just the once a year thing is the annual election of the chairperson and vice chair. And what we do typically in this is we have a nomination from the commission for the chair first and then the vice chair second. So do we have a nomination from the commission on our chair for the Livingston City Commission?
I make a motion to nominate Darrell Hogland for chair.
Second. So we have a motion for nomination of me, Darrell Hogland, as chair and a second or by Schwartz and a second by Newt's. Roll call, please.
Chair Holman?
Yes.
Commissioner Schwartz?
Four.
Commissioner Maybe? Or Commissioner News?
I'm here. Four.
Well, thank you, guys. I had a moment of like, maybe I want to be chair, but no.
Now, you're in.
I'm ready. A second sentence. We will nominate our vice chair. Do I have a motion from the commission on our on the vice chair of the Livingston City Commission?
I move we nominate Commissioner Schwartz.
All second.
We have a motion by Maybe for nomination of Commissioner Schwartz for vice chair and a second by Newt's. Roll call, please.
Chair Holman?
Yes.
Commissioner Schwartz? Or Commissioner Maybe? Or Commissioner News?
Four. Motion passes. Thank you, everyone. I think we have a great team and I appreciate all of you and I appreciate your support. We're going to move on to public comment. Please be reminded that public comments should be limited to items over which the city commission has supervision, controlled jurisdiction, and advisory power. Please state your name and address if you have a public comment. Remember too that we don't address issues that are further down in the agenda at this time. If it's something not on the agenda, we'd love to hear from you. Do we have any public comment? And you can also put your name in the chat for future. You know, lineup of when you would like can talk or speak. So please use the chat feature as well. Do we have any public comment? Alright, well.
I'd like to make a comment.
Oh, go ahead, Patricia. Name and address, please.
Okay, Patricia Grebo, 204 East Callender Street, Livingston. Um, I'm not sure if if this will or will not be covered during the discussion on Albid, so I wanted to be sure and get this in. My understanding in reviewing the law again and again is that when the city decided to vote to renew Albid, they should have had a petition with sixty percent of the downtown building owners having signed that petition and they did not have that. So I I want it for the public record and I will publicize this. I have been there's been a a rumor spread that I am not supportive of the Albid, but I am one of the biggest supporters of the Albid and always have been for the last ten years. I helped create it. I love the Albid the way it was originally envisioned and I still continue to support the original Albid. I do not support taking away the CBB and the T-Bid from the from the the Chamber of Commerce and and that has only been enhanced by the certified letter that I got from the city in which it said at the end of it said, well, some district projects might be initiated by city government that would require additional taxation and oversight would no longer be by the property owners on the Albid board. In other words, we have relinquished our rights as taxpayers and members of the Albid. So I object to what has happened with the addition of the CBB and the T-Bid. So we'll continue to to try to clarify this. My second public comment is, again, we're going to have probably discuss indigenous people as a celebration, but I want you to know that for the last twenty years I have been an advocate of the city taking responsibility for what has happened to the indigenous people of Livingston, Montana. In other words, the Crow Tribe and have been involved, for example, in a religious ceremony in a Crow burial grounds. It was was destroyed wantonly by the public. And those were serious Crow leaders. So when we say sort of a a superficial look at celebrating indigenous tribes. And by the way, when I was teaching on the Mackay and reservation about thirty years ago, we we made that decision not to celebrate Columbus Day and in fact celebrated a native holiday. So that's been going since nineteen seventy-four, actually. But the city of Livingston is taking no responsibility in researching these these holy sites that we are going to build subdivisions on. I have insisted over and over again that we the Bosman Trail goes back centuries. We have insisted upon researching that. That has not happened with this city. None of those sacred sites that we're trying to build homes on are even being considered or looked at. And I think the city is totally remiss in its responsibility towards the indigenous people of Livingston, Montana. So I object to a superficial look at this rather than taking seriously the history of the people, original people of Livingston. Thank you.
Chair Holman, I think you're still muted.
I am. I apologize for that. Thank you, Patricia, for your comments. Any other public comment at this time? Okay, alright, we will move on to consent items. Tonight we have sorry, five consent items, consent eighth items A through E. I do know we need a quick update before we move forward on it. And Michael, would you give us that update quickly, please?
I will. Thank you, Chair Holman. So if if you're following along at home on page ten to the on the agenda, because of the way that these I guess line items come out from the report we send, it pulls the first description item, but not necessarily all of the description items that fall under that category. So under Mastercard, you'll see one entry that says election night tacos and then lists about six thousand dollars. We did not spend six thousand dollars on election night tacos. That was just the first thing we purchased under that card for the month. There's many other things that are listed under there. In fact, most of that particular item was an order that is will be refunded, but I just didn't want anyone to think that we spent six thousand dollars election night tacos. That was just the first item and so the rest of the descriptors don't come out in that report. So I just wanted to clear that up before anyone was confused.
Alright, thank you. That's important. And we know that food prices have gone up, but that's a little high. I think I see Mel is coming in, so we'll we can move forward on our consent items and then Mel can join us. Mel, are you available?
Yeah, but I don't have a picture. Could you hear me at all?
We can. You're a little. It's a little.
My name is on the block, but there's no picture like I usually have.
Should be up in the corner on the.
Upper right hand.
Upper right, yeah.
Yeah, I see Quentin.
Hi, Mel.
Commissioner Freedman's having some connectivity issues as far as the speed of the internet, so he can only do audio tonight. His video won't be available.
That's fine. That probably is better for your internet speed anyway. Okay, then let's move on. And since Mel has now joined us with our consent items, do we have a motion from the consent item or on the consent items A through E or any that you would like pulled for consideration or discussion?
Adam Chair, I would like to pull consent items C, D, and E.
Okay, so do we have a motion on? So you're giving us a motion for A and B?
A and B. I'll give you a motion for A and B.
Do we have a second?
Okay.
We have a motion by Schwartz and a second by on consent items A and B. Roll call, please.
Chair Holman?
Yes.
Commissioner Schwartz?
Four.
Commissioner Freeman?
Four.
Commissioner Maybe?
Four.
Commissioner News?
Four. Motion passes. So on consent items C through E, we have pulled them for discussion. Since you made the motion, Quentin, would you start?
Yes, the only reason I polled them, I just want to to recognize these people that have applied for these board positions and that I intend to vote on them unanimously. I just think that should be recognized and put in the audio record that Allison Vincenzo for, if I'm saying that right, for Urban Renewal Agency filling an open spot. And the planning board, Tori Lyons and Stacy Jovick. And on the tree board, Thomas Thomas Shans for the tree board.
Alright, thank you. And I I'll make one other comment that of appreciation. I know that's difficult, the process. And it is within our board policies, but it it's a difficult process to interview and choose sometimes from a really strong candidate pool. And having to and it is often difficult. So I really appreciate it. There's a lot of work that goes into it. And we have three boards that have to do that hard work tonight. And then we have another discussion on it later down in the agenda. So the fourth board, but it we we really appreciate your time and energy because we trust in in our boards and and embrace their feedback and recommendations. So.
Thank you. That's exactly what I wanted to put forward, Darrell. Thanks.
Thanks, Quentin. So do we have anything else before we move on? Commissioners, any comments on those consent items?
I just wanted to agree with you both. I was thinking the same thing as we're I was looking through the applications. I remember when I first started as a commissioner, it sounded like there'd been a history of having a difficult time filling the boards. And that certainly isn't the case right now. In fact, the people that are applying, even if we don't have enough space for everyone are so qualified and have such interesting work histories and life experience. And I'm really excited to see people in Livingston stepping up to help serve. So it's awesome. Thank you.
Thanks, Melissa. Yeah, and like I said, it's not easy, me interviewing and choosing. I think we've all been there. Alright, so do I have a motion from the commission on consent items C, D, and E?
Chair Holman, I think you need to open to the public though first, right before?
No, not with consent.
I'm sorry.
Yep.
Okay, my mistake. Sorry.
Yeah, unless I I don't think I messed that up, but in our policies, we move consent items through. So do I have a motion from the commission on consent items C, D, and E?
Madam Chair, I make a motion to approve consent items C, D, and E.
Second.
We have a motion by Schwartz and a second by Freedman. Roll call, please.
Chair Holman?
Yes.
Commissioner Schwartz?
Four.
Commissioner Freeman?
Four.
Commissioner Maybe?
Four.
Commissioner News?
Yep. Motion passes. Tonight, we have no proclamations and no scheduled public comment. We do have four public hearings. Our first public hearing is resolution number forty-nine thirty-five. A resolution of the City Commission of the City of Livingston, Montana, amending the budget for the fiscal year twenty twenty-one by making appropriation adjustments in the amount of one million, one hundred and sixty-five thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars and revenue adjustments in the amount of one million, six hundred and eighty-three thousand, three hundred and seventy-four dollars. Mr. Carduce, and I know there's a correction in this somewhere.
There is. Thank you, Madam Chair. We'll have we'll share the screen in the packet. This is supposed to be resolution forty-nine thirty-five, but we ended up with forty-nine twenty-five. So this is the corrected forty-nine thirty-five. This is the second time you've looked at this. We made the one correction. Let's roll down just a little bit. We did the hundred and ten thousand reduction in the building purchase and improvement that was moved in the last meeting. So that has been updated in this one. And I think that was the only change that you you had from the last resolution. I will turn over to Paige if she wants to cover anything and then we'll be ready for questions. So Paige, you have anything to add to that?
I don't. I just want to reiterate from the last meeting that this is primarily authorizing us to spend or amend the budget for stimulus money that we received and items already approved by the commission in addition to the Big Sky Economic Development Grant that is being used to remodel the main hotel.
Great. Thank you, Paige. Thank thank you, Michael. So we will open this public hearing. I have to find something to hit hit, but I can't find. Oh, I'll use my phone. It's always good. This public hearing is now open on resolution number forty-nine thirty-five. Do we have any public comment on resolution forty-nine thirty-five? Any public comment on resolution forty-nine thirty-five? Okay. This public hearing is now closed. Commissioners, any comments or questions on resolution forty-nine thirty-five? Okay, Melissa, go ahead.
So I just have a question about the building purchase and improvements amount. So I know the vote was for nine hundred fifty thousand approval for the building. And then the building was purchased at nine hundred forty-five thousand. So are we just like rolling the change into the improvements budget or since you know that money is still existing and hasn't been spent? How does that work? Because we haven't voted on any improvement budget, but we also that five thousand hasn't been spent. So can somebody help me understand how that works from an accounting perspective? And yeah.
Michael, can you help with that or Paige?
I'll I'll start and then if Paige wants to add anything at the end, that would be great. So for this is a budget amendment, so it's really budget authority. It's what we're allowed to spend. The last meeting, the motion was to reduce that amount by a hundred and ten thousand. So that's what you see reflected on on this sheet is the nine hundred and fifty, which is a hundred and ten less than the million sixty that was in the last one. But that is just that is just authority. In this case, we haven't spent anything on improvements up to this point and it this doesn't necessarily give authority for five thousand dollars worth of improvements. We'll wait and bring those before you because most of those are going to be contracts. So you'll approve those individually as we as we go forward. Some smaller items might come out of just the general fund. But as far as this goes, this isn't a total amount or it doesn't automatically allocate five thousand dollars towards improvements. It's just the amount that we had had authorized, but we didn't end up using all of that authorization. You want to add anything to that, Paige?
I I don't. I know, Melissa, you asked from an accounting perspective what that means and it it doesn't mean a lot other than, like Mike said, it gives us the budgetary authority to to spend that money. But because we've identified the project, we're not going to spend it on anything outside of the project. It's just based on what was previously approved.
Thank you. That's helpful to understand the difference between. You know, because we see a lot of numbers on different things that we vote for, but the things that we're voting on are different, even if the numbers are the same, if that makes sense.
Right.
So um. So when we see the CARES Act numbers come back, then that five thousand dollars will be rolled into the total, I guess, for the the money that has not been allocated for CARES Act funding then, right? Because it just because like it it's not going to just disappear just because it was authorized.
Right. And that's similar with any budget item where we're authorized to spend up to a certain amount, especially capital. We always try. We always usually are a little higher than what we end up spending because we need to be. That money doesn't then disappear because we didn't spend it on capital. It gets rolled into a different capital project or goes towards increased operating expenses. So it doesn't just go away once it's approved budget-wise.
Thank you. I think that's really helpful since we've had so many questions about the CARES Act money. So thanks for taking some time to help me understand both of you.
Thank you, Melissa. Any other commissioner questions or comments?
Madam Chair?
Yep, go ahead, Quentin.
Yeah, um, yeah, I just I guess I just wanted to clarify that this is what we budgeted for the building purchase and improvements and furnishings. And not to exceed that amount. That's what we have budgeted for or what we agreed to when we agreed to purchase the building. Just so that's clear. And then we will be getting bids and stuff as we move along, correct? Paige? Michael?
Yeah, we'll get bids on on the different items. Most of the purchases, because they're separate, don't necessarily require us to go out to to public bid. They come from very different vendors, but we will we will get bids on
Some renovating.
Different items.
Yeah, the renovation stuff and stuff like that. Just want to make sure that's clear that everybody understands that. Because that's the way I understand it. Thank you. I yield.
Thank you, Quentin. I think I feel like I need to clarify unless I'm wrong on this, but that amount is the purchase amount, not the improvements and the that is a different amount that will have to come through our budget process later. And so
Correct.
That that amount is just building and costs, closing costs of that. Correct. Okay. So, alright, any other commissioner comments? Okay, do we have a motion from? And by the way, this is a second reading. Just want to clarify, actually, all of our resolutions tonight and public hearings are second readings. Do I have a motion from the commission on resolution forty-nine thirty-five?
Yeah, that's just Mel. I make a motion. We pass resolution forty-nine thirty-five.
We have a motion by Freedman and a second by Maybe. Roll call, please.
Chair Holman?
Yes.
Commissioner Schwartz?
Four.
Commissioner Freeman?
Four.
Commissioner Maybe?
Four.
Commissioner News?
Four. Motion passes. Next resolution and public hearing tonight is resolution forty-nine thirty-six, a resolution of the City Commission of the City of Livingston, Montana, amending the boundaries of the Livingston Business Improvement District at the request of the LBID and its members as required by law. Mr. Carduce?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So as you already mentioned, this is a second reading, so you've already seen this one time. After you passed the initial resolution in the last meeting, we entered the protest period where if property owners wanted to protest, they had to send their protest into the city. We did receive one one protest for the property of two twenty-seven South Second Street that had been changed from a a commercial property into a residential property and they had requested removal from the BID. I would support that change. I think that's appropriate since it's now a residential property and not a business property. So I would recommend that you pass resolution forty-nine thirty-six with the removal of the property at two twenty-seven South Second Street. Other than that, this resolution does not only change the boundaries of the LBID, but renews it for the next ten years. It accomplishes both in one resolution. And that is all I have.
Alright, thank you. I we will just open the public hearing.
Darrell?
Yes.
This is Kristen Galbraith.
Kristen, I'm going to open the public hearing officially and we will open it to public comment. This public hearing on resolution number forty-nine thirty-six is now open. So Kristen, it looks like you were to you're wanting to go. And then we have someone else now in the chat and they will be next. Go ahead.
Thanks, Madam Chair. This is Kristen Galbraith, five fourteen South Eleventh, former chair of Albid and now secretary. I just actually wanted to take the time real quick to thank the city commission and the staff for their support of Albid over the past nine years. This includes assistance with the banner and snowflake decoration bracket hanging. They use they've given a city crew to help with that, water for flower baskets and even a donation of an older Public Works truck about nine years ago. In fact, we just recently retired that truck as it reached the end of its life, but it has served us well through those nine years. Our board also thinks, of course, our district property through those nine years. Our board also thinks, of course, our district property owners for having the faith in us to move valuable and economically viable projects forward. Our efforts in the downtown area are seen through many beautification, safety and economic programs and projects. And last but not least, we look forward to serving the city and the community and our downtown over the next ten years. So we thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Kristen. Um, next, public comment. Patricia, go ahead.
Patricia Graybo, two oh four East Calendar Street. Owner, major owner of the Graybo Building. One of the largest building in the downtown and member of LBID for the last ten years helped organize the LBID. I want to say how much I support the original LBID, continue to do so. And I'm so concerned about what the city did when they submitted resolution forty-nine thirty-six originally because it did, was not accompanied by a petition having sixty percent of the owners in the district being accompanying that petition. And I believe it invalidates the LBID bid to continue for the next ten years. So I will actively seek to remedy that situation before the March deadline because I think that the city has put LBID into jeopardy, number one. Number two, I, and I do support the extension of the LBID district. There's nothing wrong with that. But the other thing is that we are, we were not, this, this resolution is not true. It is false. It says amending the boundaries of Livingston Improvement District at the request of the LBID, that's correct, but and its members as required by law. It was never, it was never amending the boundaries of the Livingston Business Improvement District at the request of its members. We never had an opportunity to make that request, and that's what I'm saying. We needed that petition with sixty percent of the building owners downtown having signed that petition. So this resolution as written is incorrect and false. So I, I, I'm really concerned about the commission proceeding without having done sufficient research on the nature of the request to complete, to continue for the next ten years. I believe the city has put LBID in jeopardy and I hope to help remedy that because I'm very supportive of LBID and its future. Thank you.
Thank you, Patricia. Uh, next. Is there anyone else? Okay, no one else? Any other public comments not in, in the chat? Any other public comment? All right, I will close this public hearing. This public hearing on ordinance, or sorry, resolution number forty-nine thirty-six is now closed. Commissioners, open the floor to you. Any comments, questions? I will start, I guess, since no one jumped unless Warren, did you?
I was just going to ask if the protest period did not constitute the ability of the current members of the LBID to disagree with with the process. I, I don't necessarily know one way or the other whether a petition was required, but would the protest period pretty much be the equivalent?
Oh, Courtney, can you help with that? Since you have the, that kind of process? All the answers to the process that we've asked in the past and since then?
Absolutely. I would be happy to. So there are two ways to create a business improvement district. One of them is where sixty percent or more of the property owners request the city to do that. And the statute actually says that we shall do it if they bring that to us. The other way for us to do it is for us to create a special improvement district. And the LBID Board, which is a member board, and they are the decision-making body, has asked the city to do that. And we have done that through the process underneath seven dash twelve dash eleven twelve. And that requires that we bring this before the public and send notice to all the property owners. And that if fifty percent or more of them protest, that it defeats the LBID. We did get one protest from Bob Jovic, whose law office at two twenty-seven South Second Street has been reconverted into a residence, and he's asked that that residence be removed since it's no longer a business. And so at this evening, we would certainly be asking the commission to approve that with the amendment of Mr. Jovic's property being removed from that boundary. We received no such request from Ms. Graybo. Did that answer your question, Commissioner Maybe?
Yes, thank you.
Madam Chair.
Can I ask a clarifying question quickly, Quentin, before?
Please go ahead.
You, Courtney, you referred to could defeat the LBID. Do you mean the boundary request or the whole LBID?
The whole, the whole LBID. So if there were more than fifty percent of the business owners who protested, then it would not be extended and the boundaries would not be changed.
They would, but we would still have those original boundaries. Or would we have zero LBID?
We would have zero LBID. The statute requires that they be renewed every ten years. And so, and this is the renewal requires a fifty percent protest and also the amendment of the boundary. So if the people who were included in the new boundary, if fifty percent or more of them had protested, then that part of it would fail independent of the extension. And then we would have the, the new boundaries absent what used to be Mustang Catering and the Jovic Law Office.
Okay. All right. Thank you for that clarification. Go ahead, Quentin.
That pretty much clarifies it for me. The petition sixty-five percent, that was just to create the LBID, correct, Courtney?
Yeah, and we could have created it without that, although I certainly think that the public involvement is important and that creating a business improvement district at the request of the business owners is by far the better way to go. But once it's created, it doesn't require the same process to extend it.
Right.
Yeah.
That, that's, that's all I wanted clarification on. That's what I thought, too. Thank you. I yield.
Thank you, Quentin.
Can I make a quick clarification to add on to that?
I actually, Chris, I can because our public comment period, public hearing part is closed by process. So we're now in the discussion stage with the commission. I apologize. So I do just want to just state, one of the frustrating parts of commission is it was made, or the statement was made tonight that we haven't researched this. Yes, we have. This has been a very important decision for the commission as well as the community and the, and the business owners. So yes, we have researched this. Also, I did, I guess I had a question, Michael or Courtney, on, there was a reference to researching and get understanding this before March. Do you know what that reference in?
I think so.
Clarify?
This is a this is a little bit preemptive. We're, we're being a little bit proactive with this. Well, let me be more clear. The LBID and its members and directors are being more proactive. The extension, go, the LBID is set to expire in March of two thousand and twenty-one. So they wanted to do this before, but the extension starts March of two thousand and twenty-one and will go through March of two thousand and thirty-one if it passes.
All right. So tonight is the decision. It's not March's decision or down, down the road. So if this decision is in a positive, the LBID, to, to put in nutshell for the community and for ourselves, the LBID will extend for ten more years and we will have additional properties minus one if that is what the commission approves. Out of the, from the request of that biz, or that former business becoming, that became a residential. So it, it would be ten more years with having the LBID with additional properties included.
Yes, it extended for ten years and the one additional property that came in on protest is removed. And that's in addition to the removal that was in your first reading, which was the old Mustang Catering.
All right, great. Thank you very much. Other commissioners, any questions, clarifying questions? Okay, um, I do want to just one last thing and I I want to again compliment our community and our LBID and not to, I mean, we're talking about them tonight, but I think a lot of businesses downtown irrelevant to the LBID and or relative to them, depending. Really have worked hard to create a space that I think is a major like center of our community and we we as a community appreciate our downtown and then the people who do the hard work. I know we did get a little update recently from the LBID and or from one of its members, just the, the work they've done recently in the past, you know, not just ten years, but even in the past year, year and a half has been phenomenal and we really appreciate it from the business revolution. I'm trying to look at my notes here. You know, asking for this extension and including other properties. We've had projects, you know, like the banners, the snowflakes, love the new snowflakes. Social media, a real focus on social media. They did help with masks and again, like I'm talking about more than just the LBID, but also this is just like one of the examples of, of one of the many downtown organizations that give back. They did like shopping local. I know I put my name in a bunch of little jars to try win a prize, did not win, by the way. But, you know, by shopping local, wearing your mask and mask up, kind of mask up Livingston concept. So pretty amazing work being done and amazing focus in our, our small little community and our small downtown. And you've been working through a really hard time with COVID and we appreciate you. Other than that, that's all I have on LBID and my questions. Any other last questions or comments from the commission? Before we bring it to a motion? Okay, do we have a motion from the commission on resolution forty-nine thirty-six?
Yeah, I make a motion. We pass forty-nine thirty-six.
Second.
We have a motion by Friedman and a second by News. Did we want to amend it as far as that property, Mel? Because if we don't amend it, amend it, then it has to go in. So we approve it, approve it with resolution as written with amending it to remove, let me see.
Two twenty-seven.
Second Second Street, sorry.
No. Oh, yeah. Second, you're right.
Mel, can you restate it with that removal?
Yeah, with, with a with a letter that was part of that to eliminate that property.
All right, we have a motion by Friedman and a second by News. Roll call, please.
Mayor Hoagland?
Yes.
Commissioner Schwartz?
Four.
Commissioner Freeman?
Four.
Commissioner Maybe?
Four.
Commissioner News?
Four.
Motion passes. Uh, next on our agenda, agenda, we have ordinance number twenty ninety-six. An ordinance of the City Commission of the City of Livingston, Montana, amending Article Five, Section two dash seven-three entitled Employee Holidays to City of Livingston Holidays and amending Section two dash seven-three A seven, amending the second Monday in October from Columbus to Indigenous Peoples' Day. Mr. Carduce, please update.
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. So this is just the second reading of the ordinance. If it passes this evening, it'll be in effect in thirty days and we'll make the change in the city code. But other than that, there are no changes from the, the last time we talked about it.
All right, thank you, Michael. We will open this public hearing. This public hearing is now open on ordinance number twenty ninety-six. Any public comments?
I'd like to make a comment.
Oh, boy.
Okay, go ahead, Patricia.
First of all, I, I would like to make one comment. One of the commissioners said we are a team. The commission is not a team. The commission are representatives of the people and the people give whatever power the commissioners have.
Patricia.
Representatives, but I want to
Patricia.
Talk about this indigenous people.
Yes, this is about an ordinance.
I know.
Please stay focused.
Okay, I am. Um, there are young people in our community who have more knowledge than anybody in the city right now about the history of the of the Crow tribe in Livingston, Montana. And they've worked with the, the young people in prior in a coordinated effort with a wonderful man called Superman. There's quite a bit of history. Dr. Larry Larran, of course, did that thirty years of research on the Crow tribe here out in Willcell. And I think it's terribly important and Yellowstone Gateway Museum has a oh, a great background on the history of the Crow tribe here in Livingston. And it is time that this city creates a committee to, one, acknowledge the role of the Crow tribe on, on the, in Livingston, Montana. And if we are going to designate an Indigenous People's Day, then we need to know what we're talking about. It isn't, shouldn't be just mindless. We should be very specific in, in what we are celebrating. And I will go one more time. I have, when I was on the commission, I fought for when subdivisions were put in to take a look at the history of that land and those sacred sites that were just simply being bulldozed. If we are going to seriously take a look at this resolution, then we need to honor the people who have lived here since practically for thousands of years and take their history into consideration when we celebrate Indigenous Peoples' Day. So my suggestion to the commission is to form a committee of some kind to, to proceed with some kind of public record of what we are celebrating, when we are celebrating Indigenous Peoples' Day and not just simply mindlessly make this recommendation. So I would like the commission to seriously make this to take a serious look at this. In addition, there has been a proposal to bike, make a bike track, a bike path along the Bozeman Trail, and it would create a beautiful bike eight mile bike track. And, and the Bozeman Trail is an ancient buffalo trail. It is an indigenous people's trail. And for our, our trails committee to take a serious look at And for our our Trails Committee to take a serious look at including this Bozeman Trail as a bike path well before it gets developed and we would be only community who would be able to do this. I also would like this committee to take a look at that as well. So that is my input. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, any other public comment? On resolution 2096, which is to amend our ordinance to reflect Columbus or turn Columbus State or from Columbus State to Indigenous Peoples' Day. Any other public comment? Okay, we will close this public hearing on ordinance 2096. This public hearing is now closed. Um, I would like to start, I guess, tonight. So I'm I referenced this letter last meeting. But I do want to read it and just I mean, maybe give a little feedback. So I got this letter and unlike our letter that Melissa read last meeting, this one did have a name and I will not share that name. The letter reads, and I see in the enterprise, you're considering doing away with a part of our history, Columbus Day. I hope you look closely at this proposal and realize that this is a part of all capitalized, all letters capitalized, American history. These individuals may or may not know not be the true citizens or they would appreciate any history history associated with our country. If this group organization that came to you about the change, we should let them start their own day of history. Just don't mess with the rest of us. They usually start their movement in small, poor communities and move it to other bigger cities. Livingston in the Valley for 15 years and loved the town, but it has changed a little. Please try keep it that way. I won't just finish the rest because it's identifying. So I guess how I'm going to start with my comments is I am here to help start this movement and we appreciate the community in that has given us feedback and brought this to our attention and or brought it in a sense to us for consideration and discussion. Just it takes a one little conversation to start change and this was one of those times. So it like within this letter, I think that it states, let them start their own day of history. Well, we are potentially starting their own day of history. This is something that is a long time coming. This is our history. Crow were here before the people that live in the valley and and you know, our ranchers or our community members that are small town. This was our important part of it. And so I'm to put it in a nutshell, I'm extremely supportive of this ordinance. I believe in it strongly and I believe we need to support all of our history and not just part of it. Any other commissioner?
Madam Chair, can I follow up?
Yes, please.
I just want to take exception to Patricia's comment that this is a mindless exercise that we're doing. I take offense to that. My wife, who is a school teacher, especially in the fifth grade when she was teaching, spent a lot of time working on the history of the Crow Tribe and all Indigenous people. And we have our school district to really, really thank for enlightening our young people. My wife has worked with Superman and I and a lot of the other elders and stuff, identifying the native names of the mountain mountains and stuff in Paradise Valley. So this is not something I take lightly. It's something that's long overdue. Columbus did not discover America. I I'm sensitive to the Italian people. They make great food, but this is something that's been long overdue and I do not take lightly and nor do I think it's just a mindless exercise. Thank you. I yield.
Thank you, Quint. Quentin, commissioners, any other comments?
I can say something, Melissa here. Thank you. I I remember the last time we voted on this or the first time we voted on this, I said something about how I was, you know, this is step one of the process and I think I look forward to seeing how our community will celebrate. I've already gotten questions from constituents about what an Indigenous Peoples' Day celebration will look like and can they be a part of it? How can they be involved? What role will the city play? So I don't think I think that Patricia's idea of forming a committee or some sort of working group that can help bring different organizations together to plan something that's inclusive and collaborative. Seems like it could be one good place to start. So I just want to acknowledge that we have talked, we have talked about how that will be a future step, how we're going to celebrate. So um, yeah, so I think it's a great idea and I'm looking forward to it. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Melissa. Any other commissioner comments? All right, I think we're ready for a motion. Do we have a motion from the commission on ordinance 2096?
I'll make a motion to approve ordinance 2096.
I'll second. I never get to. Oh, we have a motion and then I didn't know what to do after I did that. We have a motion by Schwartz and a second by Hoagland. Roll call, please.
Mayor Hoagland.
Yes.
Commissioner Schwartz.
Four.
Commissioner Freeman.
Four.
Commissioner Maybe.
Or.
Commissioner News.
Or. Motion passes. Last public hearing tonight is ordinance number 2097. An ordinance of the City Commission of the City of Livingston, Montana, amending Articles one, two, four, five, and six. Chapter three, can't see very clear. Chapter thirty of the Livingston Municipal Code and as it pertains to zoning setbacks and encroachments. Mr. Cardus.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So again, this is the second reading. You've seen this before. I think Matthew's on, so let us have him give you a quick synopsis of what's included in these changes so we can get on.
Yeah, so as the city manager said, this is the second reading. You all did vote unanimously to move it forward at the last hearing. Basically, this is just a definitions update to clarify what where the setback is measured to from the property line and to allow a few encroachments into the setback, things like eaves and front porches. But really, it's just a clarity update. So that's basically all I have unless you have any questions for me.
Can I ask one question, Matthew, on that before we open it to the public? So how far just for the public, how far is the are are those encroachments and or eaves as you referred to from the normal boundary of that we usually have within the ordinance?
Sure. So if you look at the language in the ordinance that you have, it's this red underlined section 30.42. It allows entranceway awnings and roof eaves to extend 18 inches into the setback and then sets a maximum height of those at 12 feet. So basically first floor awnings, entranceway steps and ramps may extend five feet into the front street or side street setback. So basically you can extend five feet towards the street. And again, those are only ground floor steps and ramps. Ground floor covered or uncovered porches may extend up to five feet into the front street or side street setback, again, allowing a porch along the front, the street front of the property. And again, those are ground floor porches and roofs only. And then window wells and below great stairwells may project 36 inches into any setback. If they go beyond 18 inches, they do have to be have some sort of plastic covering just to ensure that first responders, especially firefighters, don't fall into those if it is dark or smoky. So basically, it's it's allowing it to project from the building a little bit. It's going to depend on the specific property and the specific setback for a zoning district, how far that would be from the property line.
So generally, how far is that setback?
So the majority of the parcels in the city are zoned R2 and the general setback for the side and the rear of that is five feet and the front setback is 25 feet. So for example, a front porch would be allowed 20 feet from the property line.
Okay, and then would so you said 36 inches potentially. So on the side, it could be two feet from the sidewalk?
Generally wouldn't be from the sidewalk. The if generally the street side really be the side street or the front street, but it could be. Well, I guess it could be because it says any setback. So I take that back. It could be two feet from the sidewalk, basically any sort of below ground window well or stairwell.
So there could be just two feet between a sidewalk and a window well.
If the sidewalk were to be exactly on the property line.
Okay. Sounds close, but we'll open this public comment or the public hearing and then make sure everyone has their say and thoughts. This public hearing is now open on ordinance 2097. Do we have any public comment? Any public comment on ordinance 2097? Okay. Let me double check. I'm sorry. I didn't check the chat. No names in the chat. We will close this public comment on our public hearing on ordinance 2097. It is now closed. Commissioners, any questions or comments for Matthew, Michael, or maybe Courtney, depending on legal issues?
Madam Chair.
Yep, go ahead, Quentin.
I just want to thank Matthew for and the rest of staff for their diligence on this. It's a well done document. It's been a long overdue date and pleased with it. Thank you. I yield.
Thank you, Quentin. Other commissioners? Melissa, go ahead.
I was just gonna echo what Quentin said. I appreciate Matthew's thoughtfulness for this section of the code. I think it's a tricky topic and I think it is thoughtful and considering the diversity of housing and the the variability between neighborhoods in Livingston and how things were historically built. So I appreciate, I just appreciate the detail and he's considering, I think, a lot of new neighborhoods and older neighborhoods and how this fits. Also, I think it's an efficient use of space since we are in a housing crisis. I think this allows for people to get creative with the properties that they do own. And that's an important issue in our community. So thanks, Matthew, for your work on this.
I think you're still on mute, Chair Hoagland.
Mel, you're not on mute, so quit whistling.
Matthew, I do. Thanks, Michael, for clarifying every time I'm on mute. Matthew, so I'm going to just address that again. So on a corner lot, are sidewalks generally up to the setback? Or to the boundary of, I mean, I'm sorry, let me say that over, to the boundary, property boundary?
I believe they are not. They're in vicinity of the property line.
So you what I stated before with that seeming close. So if you had, that's only two feet from there, is that not a concern? For just people walking or within I don't know, safety wise on how close you know, a biker going off into the the little kid on a bike into the window well.
Matthew, yeah. Quick.
Go ahead.
So it in general, if it's within two feet, it's going to be covered. So it's not a safety issue in that fact. If to be uncovered, it would have to be at least a yard away from the property line. So someone would have to stray pretty far into someone's yard to fall into a window well that was uncovered. And that's part of the reasoning for the covering portion of it is if it gets that close to a side, whether it's somebody else's side yard or a sidewalk, that for the safety reasons, we put the covering on there. So it is, it's much harder to accidentally fall into the window well. If it's not covered, it's going to be at least three feet away from that boundary. So you'd have to, you'd have to be going pretty fast to get hopefully, hopefully three feet into somebody's yard. You know, which is still within three feet of their house. So I think that's the other thing because it's going to have to be within 36 inches of the house. People aren't as likely to stray that close to the structure as they would if it was just an open yard. And so that's why it's not as as big of a safety issue as it sounds like, I guess, because it does sound close. But I think the the steps that Matthew has put in there to either be covered or the fact that you would be that close to someone's house mitigates that risk quite a bit.
And if I may, just to clarify the intent behind that a little bit, you know, we brought it to the zoning commission originally with an 18 inch encroachment. The intent of the 36 inches is to meet building code to allow an egress stairwell if someone were to have a basement accessory dwelling unit or some sort of unit in their basement.
All right. Well, thank you, you guys. It just sounds in my mind and like I'm thinking Fourth of July or the the parade. All those people, someone tumbling just seems close on the corners, but I trust in the expertise of the of the zoning commission and and Matthew. So thank you. That's all I have. Anything else? Okay, do we have a motion on ordinance 2097?
I make a motion and we pass 2097.
Did I hear a second?
I'll second.
I'll give second.
We have a motion by Friedman and a second by Newt. Roll call, please.
Mayor Hoagland.
Yes.
Commissioner Schwartz.
Four.
Commissioner Freeman.
Four.
Commissioner Maybe.
Four.
Commissioner News.
Or.
Motion passes. And thank you again, everyone, for the hard work on that. It's a long time. Tonight, we have no ordinances. We have, well, we did have resolutions and ordinances, but they're not in the same place. We had public hearings with those. We tonight, we do have three one six action items. Our first action item is accepting approved and I discuss approved and I accepting 2021 City Commission meeting schedule. Mr. Cardus.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So this is something we started last year, setting the meetings for the entire year to make our schedule a little more predictable, both for the commissioners and for the public. They've done a great job of developing this calendar for you. Unfortunately for you this year, none of the commission meetings fall very close to holidays. So I don't think we actually canceled any. I think we did move one. If I can find it. That might even not even be true. But also, so the black squares would be the 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 current meetings, the dashed outlines would be suggested listening sessions. And the red yeah, so that the the green and the red and some of the the shading, we put the municipal deadlines for filing for since this is an election year for the city commission. So anybody that's interested in those deadlines, all that information is also on this calendar. And then holidays are shaded in for you. Um, and then holidays are shaded in for you. So. Think that is all I have on this one. Um, so the real question for you, the only. The one that falls on, it's not a holiday this year because it's not a federal election year, but is, there is a meeting on election day still on November second. So that is. All I have for you.
All right. Thank you very much. So commissioners, um, any questions on our calendar, our proposed calendar? Of course. There is flexibility when needed, um, as always, that. Sometimes things come up. And conflicts happen, so, uh, it's not certain, but it's, I feel it's very appreciated. And, uh, helpful when planning. Anyone else have any comments or questions on the calendar?
I have a quick question.
Go ahead, Melissa.
Um, is November second, isn't election day a holiday for city staff?
So election day is a holiday for city staff in even years. Um, it's not a holiday on a non. So non-federal election year, so, um, twenty-one will not be a holiday, twenty-two will. Twenty-three will not. So it's basically every other hol- every other election day is a holiday for city staff.
Okay, um, I guess if we have time before November, but that's the one that I would, that stands out as I would consider changing. Um, if any of them, just because we don't want to interfere with, um, people that want to participate in government and people that want to vote. Like if it makes it hard for people, but there's plenty of time for that. And also I want to thank you, Faith. You always give us such nice calendars and I really appreciate that you take some time. To lay things out for us and make it easy for people to, uh, keep up with the happenings in Livingston. So thank you, Faith.
Thank, Melissa, anyone else? Okay, we. Do we have to make a motion to accept it or can we, is it more about discussion at this stage?
Uh, you can do it either way. If you do make a motion, then it's the official calendar for the year. Um, and then any changes you'd have to bring up in a different meeting before you wanted to change it.
Okay, do we have a motion or is there some other ideas or thoughts the commission has on that?
Thank you, Mo. What do we call that? Uh, action, I may.
We have a motion by Schwartz and a second by May. Roll call, please.
Chair Holman.
Yes.
Commissioner Schwartz.
Or.
Commissioner Freeman.
For.
Commissioner Maybe.
Yes.
Commissioner News. Or.
Motion passes. Action item, we have discuss approved deny city commissioners' assignments to city boards and committees. So, Mr. Cardes, uh, normally we have that in our packet. Did we miss it?
We can put it in the bag if you want, but it's still the, there are no changes this year. We put it in last year because we changed. So it's still tree board, uh, U R A, Parks and Trails Committee, uh, Planning Board and. Zoning, no, not zoning, um, Health Board.
Okay, say those again, so we can make sure we clarify for the public where everyone is or what the potential is.
U R A.
Okay.
Board. Parks and Trails. Planning and Health Board.
So you are a tree, Parks and Trails, Planning and Health Board.
There's also the library, but it's not a non-voting member.
Are we missing anything else, commissioners, that, um. From that list or any other information? Okay, so. Normally we go through this and by board by board. Or we could do a. Just to, everyone could give their feedback on, um, whether they want to be off or on, or if we need any changes. And then we can move on to a full just acceptance of where everyone is on their boards or do some changes. So there's some. Ways to get through this. Do we have any feedback or thoughts on the boards that each commissioner is assigned to? And whether there's any need for changes or, um, statements that you would like to make as far as. Up on a board. Commission membership, I should say, on a board.
Madam Chair.
Yes, go ahead, Quentin.
Um, I'm currently happy, uh, with the boards I serve on. Which, uh, is library and the, uh, Livingston Park County Health Board.
Okay, and, um, I mean, I would just state where I know everyone is, but I know Melissa's on. On planning, Quentin is health and library, um, I'm on Parks and Trails. Mel is on tree board and, uh, Warren is on U R A currently. Anyone, um, proposing to change a board?
I'm happy with the U R A.
I'm good. I'm good with the tree board.
All right. Quentin?
Yes.
So from what I'm hearing, and I am happy on the Parks and Trails Board. So. Do we have a motion to approve, um. Representation of the commission on each of the boards as, uh, to continue as stated?
For action item B, that we all remain on the boards that we're previously sitting on.
We have a motion by Newt and a second by Holman. I mean, sorry, Schwartz. Roll call, please.
Chair Holman.
Yes.
Commissioner Schwartz.
Or.
Commissioner Freeman.
For.
Commissioner Maybe.
For.
Commissioner News. Or.
Motion passes. Um, next on our agenda is to discuss city attorney's newsletter and State of Montana Municipal Records. Retention schedule. Thank you for the book, Courtney. Did you want to?
You're welcome. Didn't want you to get too excited, your first meeting going into the year.
Yeah.
Um, really, I want to give you an overview and, um. Solicit your input and questions. So there is, of course, schedule number eight. And it gives us a lot of information about retention of municipal records. Uh, in great detail, but there are also a fair number of records that we have that are not in that retention schedule. So, um, for instance, requests for prosecution that go through my office, some of them have confidential criminal justice information in them. Um, there's no reason that we have to keep them under the retention schedule, but. It's left to me to decide when we should dispose of them because the, the. Statute limitations for most misdemeanors is a year. We generally keep them for a year and then dispose of them. Um, and that's probably what should happen, but the city commission has the ability to approve. Um, if you want to specifically adopt the schedule that Secretary of State puts out. Um, and also, if we're going to dispose of records, there are particular forms that have to be filled out. For any of the records that we're going to dispose of, um, that are. Permanent records in particular, if we're going to get rid of stuff, because at some point we will run out of storage space. Um, we have to offer those to the Montana Historical Society and provide public notice that we're going to, uh, dispose of those records. Whether or not the historical society takes them. So, uh. If anybody has questions specifically about schedule, I'll certainly answer them, but that's kind of the, the, the broad strokes of that. Um, and whether or not the city wants to, the commission wants to, uh, adopt that. That retention schedule, and we could do it largely as we have been doing with, um. Other resolutions and ordinances that we amend as the state updates those things. Where they have their committees for the retention and, and with electronic records in particularly. In port, in particular, those things change fairly rapidly. So as those standards are adopted, we just. Keep moving forward with the, the state retention schedule. Um, there's a state archivist that's on that committee. There are. Uh, local records officials on that committee, so it, it's pretty well represented and well rounded as far as deciding what, uh. What things need to be kept and what things can be disposed of without too much. Process. Does anybody have any questions about that?
I do have a question if we could start, so. I guess in a nutshell, Courtney, are, is this at a stage of discussion or do we move it towards? Um. Changing an ordinance or updating an ordinance in the future?
You wouldn't need to update an ordinance. You could just pass it by resolution. And basically say that the state's municipal records retention schedule should be adopted and used by the city. It's the one that we refer to anyway. It's, it's the standard that we're upholding now. Um, there certainly have been records lost in the past, uh, with fire and flood in particular. Um, and those records have been both city and county records because for the, for a long period of time. Um, all of those records were in the same building.
So if we accepted it within an action item today, that's appropriate. We don't have to move it to a, you use the word resolution, so we're not, you know, commission speak, a resolution to me means it goes into.
We could absolutely do it by an action item. It would just have to be a discussion and decision action item rather than just the. I think it's listed only as a discussion item, um, on the. On the agenda today. Let me make sure.
Yes, it's only a discussion today, so not up for a vote, I guess.
It, it's not, it's just for discussion today. If, if you want it as an action item, we can bring it back to you.
Well, I'm going to ask you, uh, what do you guys recommend, Michael and Courtney?
Uh, and from my perspective, doing another resolution is always cleaner because they get stored and they're much easier to find. Um, going back and finding action items is more difficult. Uh, the resolution gets a number, it's in the system, it's, it's, it's simple to, to come back on. So I would recommend just doing it as a, as a resolution in a future meeting.
All right. Um, any other commissioner questions? Melissa, go ahead.
So I, um, just want to make sure I'm understanding. Courtney, is this. I mean, it seems like this is something that probably pertains to lots of city departments, the idea of storing records, but I'm wondering if this falls under your purview. Um, and is there something that's prompting this? I'm wondering like, if when we change city staff. Are we, if there's no, if there's nothing concrete about how records are stored. Does it just sort of change with every administration or every department head? Um, is that why this is coming up, that you just want some uniform? Like some uniform guidelines across time to make it easier for when people come and go, that we know. What records exist and what don't? Is that part of it or?
So part of it is certainly that the commission understands that this is, this is a process that each department head. Um, is basically tasked with in dealing with the records that are within their department. Also, uh, one of the things that you saw, um, in previous meetings was that the record storage that we have now in Shane Center. Has damaged a fair number of records over time and that that, uh, and that there's also. They're running out of room to store records, particularly permanent records and court records. So in, in offering this up, um, it's in a. It's an attempt to ask, ask you guys to understand what the standards are. Um, and this is what we're dealing with and certainly we want to be consistent and do the best job that we can with it. And we want to let you know so that we can get the resources and a clear understanding of policy. So that we have, uh, success in maintaining the records, um, as required.
Thank you. That's helpful. Hear why it's coming up. Yeah, I'm in, Drell, I'm. In agreement with you, if there's, um. If there's some specific recommendations from the city, then it might be useful to have that come back to us. With what it is that the city needs to be able to uphold the standards, the state standards. Thank you. I yield.
Chair Holman, I think you're still on mute.
Dang it, sorry. So, uh, um. It looks that like we would, uh, we're, just commission would like to see this on an agenda in the future. At a designated, like, place, sounds like in a resolution for discussion and, um, public comment at that time. Correct?
We can do that.
All right. Thank you very much. Um, so moving on to action item D. So discuss approved deny membership of city conservation board. Mr. Cardes.
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. So originally, so there's three open slots, uh, for this coming term on the conservation board. Originally, there were three openings and four candidates, but today we had one of the candidates withdraw. Uh, so now we only have three applicants for three, three open positions. Uh, those applicants are Alexis Van Purnis. Uh, Lindsay Ganong and, um, Amy Bowser.
Bowers.
Bowers, sorry. Uh, and she was the addendum, um, application that came in. Uh, today that you should have seen come in your email. So, uh, while if there had been three openings and three applicants, we would have put it in. The consent items with the rest of them, but in this case, there was originally four, but we're back down to three.
All right. Well, thank you, Michael, for that update. Um, I do have a question, but I think we can, because this is a. Um, approval or not, or denial or approval of something, we better open it to public comment. Is there any public comment on, uh, membership of city conservation board? Okay, I don't think we have. Anyone on this item, um. I, you know, I, I guess I would like to just state, and generally in, um, with a policy. We have through the, you know, past couple of years, really developed policies that go across each. Um, board and help boards to go through the process. It's all on the same page, are all going through the process, uh, within processes, processes of the board, boards the same. Um, so normally. Uh, the boards will interview candidates or applicants and then make a recommendation to add, recommendation as we have seen. Um, in this case, that wasn't done in, in, um, by the conservation board and this time around, but it looks like it all. Uh, shook out and, and worked out for the board. And that we have, again, multiple candidates interested, which is great and, uh, but like I said, normally it's brought to us. And just a, um, just reminder as to how we do it, uh, within our boards and our policy. Um, I think we're at thirty or ninety minutes to everyone, but if we could finish up any other co- commissioner comments. On conservation board, um, members.
Oh, thanks, Drell. I just want to acknowledge Bill. Um, he withdrew his application, but he did help get our conservation board kicked off. Kick, he helped kicked it off when we started, um, so I just want to give him thanks and praise. He's an active member of our community and he's involved in lots of different things, and I sure appreciate that he gave a year of his life towards the conservation board. So thanks, Bill.
Thank you, Melissa. Thank you, Melissa. That is a very good point. Bill does a lot for our community and that was just one of the things. Any other commission comments before we have a motion? Okay, do we have a motion on action item D? The recommended three new members of the conservation board.
I make a motion that we pass item D for the conservation board.
We have a motion by Friedman and a second by maybe roll call, please.
Hoagland?
Yes.
Commissioner Schwartz?
Or?
Commissioner Freeman?
Or?
Commissioner Maybe?
For?
Commissioner News?
Or?
Motion passes. Do we need a five minute break? We have you know, two more action items and manager comments, city commissioner comments. Would you like your break?
Yes.
Okay, we will take a five minute break. Faith, please put on your little timer.
We're back.
Okay, Mel. All right.
Yeah.
Let's move on to our last two action items. Our next action item is to discuss approved deny planning boards request for extension to the deadline of providing a growth policy recommendation. Mr. Cardus.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So the item is basically what you just read. It's a request from the planning board to the commission to provide them with some more time to review the growth policy before making a recommendation to the commission. I think their process has started to go fairly well over the recent meetings. I know the meeting again tomorrow to I think set up the final schedule. So I I would support this as city staff would to give them some extra time to continue to go through the public process to come up with the best recommendation that they can.
All right. Thank you, Michael. Well, let's open it to public comment. Is there any public comment on the extension to the deadline of the growth policy? Better double check the chat.
Hey, Drell, this is Michelle Ubaraga.
Go ahead. Michelle, will you stay?
Michelle Ubaraga. Yep, yep, seven eleven Lockleaven Drive here in Livingston. I just want to say that I have been attending planning board meetings and really impressed. And I think that that there's deep appreciation in the community for the time and energy attention the planning board has given to the growth policy update. And I really think that they have just like Michael Cardo said that they have really put a lot of time and energy into thinking about how to move forward and it looks really exciting. So I just wanted to share support and enthusiasm for the process that they laid out. Thank you.
Thank you, Michelle. Any other public comment?
Madam Chair?
Yes, go ahead.
This is Carrie Kael at seven oh two East Lewis Street and I'm I would just like to hop on board with Michelle and really say that I think that this extra time for the planning board is needing needed. They are truly working with the public and looking over this plan, which is so important to our city. And I would just really encourage you to give them that extra time to do a really good job. They're they're really working hard and listening to the citizens. And I think it's just so important that you give them that time so that we can really have a really wonderful growth policy that we can all be very proud of. So I would just ask that you support this. Thank you.
Thank you, Carrie. Any other public comment? Okay, thank you, everyone. Any commissioner comments? Melissa, go ahead.
Yeah, I just want to say I know this wasn't the original goal, this timeline, but I hope that the commission will consider honoring this request. I think what we want to see as a commission is a pretty well ironed out document and have most of the hard conversations over with by the time it comes back to us. So I think in order to do that, we should give the planning board more time. And I also just want to acknowledge that we haven't done this before. Livingston hasn't done anything like this before at this level with a growth policy. So it's going to take a little bit longer because it's bigger and more in depth than what we've done before. And I think the only person that's probably done anything quite like this before is Matthew and he's more recent to the team. So I think we're in a good place and we're we're working through it. And Brian here submitted a really great letter. And if people have specific questions, it looks like he's on the call tonight. Otherwise, I think he really laid it out in this letter. So yeah, I'm in I'm in total support of an extension. Thanks.
Thanks, Melissa. Any other commissioners? Questions, comments?
Yeah, at this point, I would think that all the time, effort, money that's been put into it to to not be sure that it's been absolutely fine tuned would be a terrible waste. So I think the extension should be given. Thank you.
Thanks, Warren. All right, I I appreciate again, as others have stated, that the hard work of the planning board in the community and and their participation has been nominal. We appreciate all of you and I trust in the recommendation of the planning board and and the wants of the community in giving extended time. I feel like I want it to be faster, but I'm also the one that has been clear that I keep, you know, wanting it to go, but understand that process sometimes takes longer than what I want. And I'm okay with that. I just appreciate the hard work. Anyone else? Okay, let's have a motion. Do we have a motion from the commission on action item E?
I move we approve the request for extension for the deadline of growth policy recommendations.
Second.
We have a motion by maybe and a second by Friedman. Roll call, please.
Chair Hoagland?
Yes.
Commissioner Schwartz?
Or?
Commissioner Freeman?
Or?
Commissioner Maybe?
For?
Commissioner News?
Or?
Motion passes. Last action item tonight is discuss intervention flow chart with resources list. Mr. Cardus.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So this is a I guess this is one of the steps in providing some information on how the resources and the different organizations within the city and the county work together to provide support to people in crisis. And especially when they encounter the either have a law interaction with law enforcement or the city court. So I'm going to turn it over to Courtney to kind of explain this chart she made. We do not expect you to memorize it. There won't be a test later. But it does at least, I think, give a pretty good graphical representation of the complexity of the systems that are already in place. And the intent is to try and evaluate those systems and find the gaps that we have for our community and then come up with good solutions to address those gaps.
Thank you. I really, I really want your questions and I want to know whether or not this paints a complex, but hopefully clarifying picture of the process that are used in interventions of all kinds for first responders and situations in which we're doing crisis management. So I could certainly talk about standards or where things are in any of this flow chart and also what might be seen as as potential gaps. And whether those gaps are in the strategic side or the operational side and how those might work together and what those look like and where we can hopefully expect your support in reaching successful outcomes around both strategic and operational leadership.
Sorry, I was trying to read it on the screen a little bit. I guess I will just start with a question before I turn it over to the public to for any feedback, but is this also a document that would come in handy with our discussion on that liaison or that social worker concept? You know, looking at funding or towards funding potentially an individual in that position?
I think it's essential to that conversation because I think it's really essential that you guys can see the moving parts and the resources that are already in play. So that you can start to look at and perhaps define where the gaps are. These are resources that we work with all the time and a flow of facts and consequences and and standards that we use all the time and and because we're aware of them, that doesn't mean that you are or that you don't have questions that you want to ask so that you understand them better.
Thank you, Courtney. That's helpful. Let's open it to public comment. Is there any public comment on action item D? I need sorry, wrong letter, E? Let me go through the any public comment on action item F, the flow chart with resources list? Or questions?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
This is Carrie Kael from seven oh two to East Lewis Street. Just looking at this chart is sort of incredibly confusing to me. And I realize that, yes, there are all these resources available to folks. I think the idea that the public has been coming to you with is the idea of a social worker to assist police in a mental health emergency. And I think that I think the idea potentially from the public is that the the social worker would assist the police during this time. You know, a lot of times when a person in a uniform and a gun shows up, when someone's having a mental health emergency, that's when conflict happens. That one, that's when bad things happen. And the social worker would help to defuse those situations and potentially get these people the help they need in that moment. Potentially reducing the amount of contact the police are going to have with these people, potentially reducing an ambulance ride to the hospital, which they would have to pay for, an ER visit, those types of things. And I I think that this chart is just making it incredibly more confusing than it needs to be. And I think that the idea of the social worker is to make things simpler so that people can find these resources. So I I'm just worried that this chart sort of just confuses everyone. And there are models across the country that can help us find these these answers and and the way to make this work. There's a a model from Eugene, Oregon called Kahoots that could potentially be very helpful for us. And they they even have a service that would help us look at that model and use it within our community. So just something to think about. I just kind of wanted to throw that out there as as some thoughts to maybe make this a little more simple and not so confusing. Thank you.
Thank you, Carrie. Any other public comment? Okay, let's open it up to commissioners. Any thoughts, comments?
Drell?
Yeah, go ahead, Melissa. Sorry, I was looking down and you were probably raising your hand. Go ahead.
I was just going to say, don't, I think that this flow chart is a little bit confusing. But I do you know, I think obviously that's a sign that a social worker could probably help streamline this process if this is actually how it plays out in Livingston is like this. Since a social worker is a, you know, somebody academically trained and practically trained to deal with these kinds of situations. It seems reasonable to lean into their expertise if this is what the process is looking like for our community. And I mean, the first gap I see, and this is you know, we're getting this over a holiday break. So it's not like I spent a ton of hours poring over this document and studying it, but the first thing I'm not seeing is somebody that somebody that is in a situation, maybe where they're what's the word, like detoxing? So it's not criminal behavior. They're not necessarily a threat to themselves or others. And there's no link to community caretaker intervention to a place like the Montana Chemical Dependency Center. So that's a pretty big gap. Since we know that's a pretty big issue in Montana and in Park County. Just for an example, so I think this is a great place to start because we can see what apparently what the process is like is not super straightforward. And there there is a gap here. So that's my first thoughts on it, Chair Hoagland. So I think it's a good starting point in thinking about how a social worker could help streamline this. And there are communities in Montana, not just big communities. I think it's Kalispel doing something like this. I'm trying to remember. There was a town that wasn't one of the biggest towns. I think it's Kalispell doing something like this. I'm trying to remember. There was a town that wasn't one of the biggest towns that that is using a social worker when it's not somebody breaking the law. But somebody that needs assistance. And that is what's on my mind for now. Thank you.
Commissioner Hoagland, you're still on mute.
Sorry. I, I will speak on to what or add on to what Melissa said. As far as someone who sort of has, if I had a flow chart of the work I did today, it would look like this, right? As a, in my work. So I actually appreciate this. I don't, and I, I do understand like what Carrie was saying. It seems complicated and more complicated than needed. But it also, what I do like is it does step us through. Because like in a case today, I had conversations with DFS. I had conversations with CASA, with educators, with health providers. And in so all those people are somehow in this document. But I think like Melissa's saying is there's some and I felt the same way, is there some other, is something else that we do or recommendations that we do that are not referenced here? And if we're not doing those recommendations, that is a missing part of what we're referring to or like Melissa was saying, you know, what are your next steps? When you have, what, what does the city do or the, or the police in this case to help someone who isn't necessarily going to go through the court system? But needs some assistance from, from the, instead of being arrested to that next step. OK, and I, and so I like the complication of this because it does lay it out. And this is really what it looks like a lot when, when you're dealing in those really deep situations that are very intense with a lot, you know, a lot of people involved trying to help one individual. And so Courtney, well, I guess what I'm asking is, is can you add to or kind of reflect on that in with this document in time? On what we do due to, you know, with that kind of individual. I see like the acute intoxication and behavioral health issues. It moves to more the legal realm, but what do, what other things do we do? Because that's kind of where we're at as far as that conversation. What are we missing?
We do all kinds of referrals for things that are not criminal. And and that is absolutely part of that community caretaker doctrine. So if we have somebody who is detoxing, there's been no crime, there's a mental issue, there's a mental health issue, and they're no threat to themselves or anybody else. There, if they are capable of making decisions, if, if they are truly not a threat to themselves or anyone else. And that is sometimes based on a level of intoxication. Because at some point, our medical folks in their evaluation, as they help us do that, will say that person is so intoxicated that they can't take care of themselves. If they were to throw up and and not be awake, they could potentially aspirate and die. So at that point, based on that level of intoxication, they're going to go to the hospital. And that's the first place that they're going to go. And they will get them there in the safest way that they can, based on the standards that they have to deal with. And that, that includes law enforcement and and our fireman paramedics generally working together. I will, I will give you an example from a recent case. And and really, that's as, that's as far as we go. Once they're handed off, if there's not a criminal element, if we don't need to babysit them in any way, then, then that is our handoff. And then they're able to hopefully seek assistance after that. I know from the reports that I see that when somebody comes in with acute alcohol intoxication and they're discharged, they get, I want to say the last one I saw was three pages of here's what happened to you, here's why it happened, here are resources to help you. But if that person is capable of making their own decisions and they're sobered up, they may decide to actually get help and they may decide not to. And that's really sad, particularly if they decide not to. But we may not see them again, and they may not ask for help. Really where we have the most draw on our resources is with crisis stabilization, where there's some element of criminality or some reason that we had to intervene, even if it's only for the safety of that person or perhaps their, their family or their friends or their neighbors. And then within that crisis stabilization, it has to go through, you know, depending on what the issue is, if it's just mental health, then they go to CRT for evaluation. If it's mental health and acute intoxication, then nobody from CRT will talk to them until they sober up. Because they can't make an effective evaluation until that person is no longer so intoxicated that they can be coherent and communicate. So those are all things that happen within that crisis stabilization. And if they're not combative, oftentimes the officers can allow them to be treated and and come back later. Or if they need to come back and pick them up, they can, if they issue them citation, they can do that at the time later. They make all kinds of accommodations for those kinds of things. As far as the referrals for people who, who do not need crisis stabilization, there are all of the things that are in behavioral health in the center. There are certainly all of the things that are medical, if it's a medical issue. Generally, they go through their own providers and we do provide, you know, some direction. But there is a limitation based on people's personal integrity, what they have the right to do, particularly if they're adults.
Well, thank you, Courtney. I think so, just one last, I guess, opinion on, from me is when I'm looking at the chart, I still see like Melissa referred to as well, some just gaps. And you, you referenced that at the beginning, that we're looking for those gaps.
And and I think that maybe it would be helpful to have a clear definition of what the gap is, like what is it that's a gap? So if we're looking at it as.
Oh, go ahead. Sorry, Courtney. I do have something.
Yeah, it's, it's where whatever the standard is that we have to deal with actually meets the street. What is the standard that we're working with and and how is that actually implemented? And there's both a strategic and an operational component to that. So if, if we're looking at that from, from the perspective of how, how does that person, how does a person or a, a strategy or a goal get us to where we want to be? And and how do we identify where that that gap actually is so that we can try to fill it in a meaningful way? And to overcome by gave gathering data and collaborating and figuring out a clear policy and promoting that through the leadership, including the commission, so that it's backed by the policy and financial support that should allow us to have an excellent outcome and take real action where the gap exists.
Right. Well, and I think just I'm my last kind of thought on what you're saying is that when you look at the chart and you like in reference to children, and obviously I work with children. There's, there's often that liaison, like we have a, we have liaisons now, mental health liaisons that work with families that are based out of the schools, supported by schools, along with mental health with LSPRI. But they, with that, you have this liaison who kind of takes everything on to help a family in crisis. And I think that's where I'm seeing the gap is that it's where we have a gap where the adults don't have that kind of umbrella unless they are in maybe more the bigger crisis situations or maybe some oh, they have support by the state or C, CPS kind of thing or something like that. So that's where I see the gap is that, you know, that liaison or that the person that sort of follows and helps to get through this process a lot, you know, to deal, help move people in the direction from the trauma, from, you know, from the police situation that a family went through, for example, which we know sometimes it's impacting bigger than just the, the the person, but it's the family involved or the others that were. Well, so I'm just saying that that there's often that, just that one catch person. And like I said today, just in my conversations, it was great for me to say, OK, the CASA is the one that it will have the full picture. When I was communicating with multiple people, I knew that that was the one person who was gathering and working through the problem with the, or with, through the situation. OK, so that, that's just my opinion on, I still see those gaps. But I also think there's some additional things to add to this chart as well, you know, to help.
I'm sure you're right.
Yeah. That's just my thoughts on it. Any other commissioners?
Can I clarify something that I was saying earlier?
Yeah, go ahead, Melissa.
When I was talking about like somebody detoxing, I wasn't necessarily talking about alcohol. Where I was talking about other things that take longer to get out of the system, where it's not necessarily the case that somebody is even committing a crime. Because there's many, many situations where people are addicted to things and it's not necessarily illegal or they're committing a crime when the thing is happening to them and they're in public. So that is a gap to me that's not addressed here because it didn't trigger these initial things after law enforcement was called. Like they weren't necessarily committing a crime. And I guess it sounds like they'd be community caretaker adventure intervention, but it wasn't necessarily, they're not tight in there. So that's just one example. The other thing that could be helpful for people looking at this flow chart, I think, if we use this flow chart as a conversation piece in the future, would be naming what the themes are with these colors, because I think that there are some themes with your color coding. But I could be misinterpreting, but if there is, that could be useful. I think maybe when I'm reading your chart, it looks like different colors are sort of different key organizations or umbrellas within the community. So that's just some feedback that might make it easier for people to follow along. Yeah. Points. Thanks, Drell.
Thank you, Melissa. OK, any other commissioner comments? OK, it looks like we were just discussing, it's a discussion, so there's no decision on that. So we're going to move on to our city manager comments. Go ahead, Michael.
Because I just got back from the holidays, I have no city manager comments for you.
All right. Thank you, Michael. Melissa.
I want to just point out, if you have not been downtown at night lately, it is worth your time to walk on the trail by Depot Park. Our, I was just thinking about how stunning our downtown looks this time of year and all of the different groups. When you notice something that's beautiful, whether it's the lights on the trees or it's the snowflakes or it's the businesses that are decorated. It's just this really awesome demonstration, I think, of thinking about all the people whose hands and lives were invested in making our town look beautiful. And it's really, really pretty. I would recommend going for a drive downtown or walking through it at night. All the different groups have been doing such a good job and it's just stunning, our little Livingston. That's all I wanted to say before the lights come down.
Thanks, Melissa. I must add that just the two little lights or trees they have in front of the Shane Center look phenomenal as well. There's just two small trees, but whatever they did to them, it's amazing. Next, I guess, Warren. Go ahead.
I just want to wish everybody best possible 2021. And for taking the time to contribute to, to these commission meetings. Thank you.
Thanks, Warren. Mel.
Yeah, I want to wish everybody a happy new year forward. I was with a counterpoint group for many, many years here. And when the pandemic hit, I haven't worked because of various reasons. But today I had a vaccination, Moderna, the first one. It was easy, didn't hurt. I have a follow up February 2nd. And with that, I'll be able to help them part time with this vaccination. So I feel grateful for that and I miss the clients an awful lot. So this will allow me to go back into the fold and looking forward to that. And I just wish everybody and the commission, been great working with you and continue on, do good work. Amen.
Thank you, Mel. Quentin, go ahead.
Yes, once again, Happy New Year, everyone, and thank you to the people that volunteered to serve on these boards. It's great. It's loved. It's great to see the community engagement and stuff like that. Other than that, I have nothing more to add. Thank you. Oh, besides a well-run meeting again, Madam Chair, thank you.
Thank you, Quentin. I, other than a thank you and Happy New Year, I just want to bring up something that I would like to see on a future agenda. And it has been brought to us on, on the the requirement of owners or of owning property for, to be on a board. And I would love to have a conversation in the future. And Michael, would you put it on our list of to-dos as to what what is required of currently by state law, as well as what's in our ordinances as far as property ownership to be on boards? The freeholder concept and how we can kind of reevaluate the that, those issues. Please put it on our list. I would like, and I hope, unless I don't have a second, I, I'm hoping that another commissioner will give your feedback, I guess, on adding that to a future agenda for discussion.
Second.
Chair, I think actually the planning board is going to look at that issue. And so we can just wait for their recommendation and we'll bring it to you soon as they get something from them.
Perfect. We'll start there and then we'll, we'll hope to have some resolution. I mean, and just on a final of that, as I reflected on it, I, there's one thing that keeps coming back to me that is the having to have ownership of property to be a participant and a community member in a a participant and or a member of a committee seems a little counterintuitive to the fact that about over a third of our population rents. So that's just something that keeps coming back to me that that's not giving them value, enough value as far as their participation in our community. So I just wanted to say that and, and I'm glad that the planning board is discussing it in the future when they have time. Because they are very busy. So thank you to, again to everyone. Happy New Year. And so do I have a motion for adjournment?
Oh, moved. I move. That we do.
All in favor? I?
I.
Opposed. This meeting of the Livingston City Commission is adjourned at 7:44. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Next time.